Here we are. Welcome, welcome everybody. It's Ambassador Downhold number 41. It's the 28th of March 2023. And we've got a nice group today. We're joined by Roger Kaboti, White Cardinal, Kaddano Class, Crandano, Crypto Being, Eric S, Flyofools, Greatness1, Hadolf, Judith, Kanichi, Mikasa, Pragmatic, Stephen, Sugar and Spice, and The Fries Defi. Thank you all for joining. Um, as per usual, I'll keep an eye on the member link, or the call limit for, um, the limit is at 25 for having camera on, but I always like to have it at least on in the beginning. We'll see, what happens. If more people join, they can. Uh, I've got a pretty simple and short agenda for today. It's more or less just the basics. Uh, we'll start out with an update on the workgroups. Then touch a little bit on the tasks and, um, then a couple of mentions and shoutouts. And then there's room for, uh, for open topics. So let's dive right in. And I wanted to get started, something which I do forget every now and then, or every done. Um, with a little bit of a outline on what the ambassador program even entails for those watching for the very first time, or those joining the call for the very first time. Uh, basically, uh, who are the ambassadors? That would be anybody who wants to learn a bit more about the Asnet ecosystem and contribute to growing it, spreading the word. And it's an opportunity for everybody to contribute to the growth of the project and eventually working towards beneficial AGI. And we do this by getting together in self-organizing workgroups. And these are formed on focusing on specific projects like marketing, writing, um, translations, uh, processes, treasury guilds. So all kinds of areas of activity within the program. And why should you join? Well, first of all, you're in this call already. If you're watching this on YouTube, you should join this call. Uh, it's a nice opportunity to meet cool people and, um, grow yourself and unleash your potential for the collective growth. With that being said, let's, uh, go to the, uh, workgroups and their progress. Uh, let me have a quick check to see if TiVo is in the house. It's not. Um, basically for the Process Guild, uh, the meeting is always taking place after this one at 19 UTC. Speaking of UTC and times, um, it was a bit of confusion when we were actually starting this. It's that week of the year. It happens twice when all the times get mixed up. Um, we chose to stick to the UTC times that were, uh, we were already using. So simply 18 UTC for the Downhold, 19 UTC for the Process Guild. Well, you can see it on the, on the screen, all the times. Um, let's see. I guess for now I'll not, uh, go too deep into the Process Guild. For the Treasury Guild, uh, we had a review of the budgets and how to deal with these on a workgroup level. And we established that, um, we didn't touch on all of them, but we established for both the, um, Process Guild and the Treasury Guild that they would have a starting budget uh, to work with right now initially of a thousand dollars for, uh, per month. And this is something to actively review and, uh, see what's good and if it's being spent well. And yeah, so if it's needed, it can be adjusted. But that's for, uh, getting things started right now. Um, the Treasury Guild meetings at that, uh, they do take place at Thursdays at 15:30 UTC. So do join in if you're interested in, um, the Treasury side of things, figuring out how tasks get rewarded and the process behind that. Then on the, next on the list would be the Marketing Guild, um, meeting, which, um, we're having on Fridays at 13 UTC. And perhaps I can give the word to Crandano for giving a bit of an overview of what's happened last week?
Definitely. Uh, Marketing Guild, uh, we discussed what the role of the Guild should be moving forward at last Friday's meeting. Uh, we decided that Marketing Guild will be a common hub for content creation and social media within the Ambassador Program, where members will have a vote on things like reward allocation between the workgroups. Friday meetings are open to community input and ideas. Uh, Marketing Guild will be a spot for workgroup leads to give updates and strategize budgets. A percentage of funds can go towards projects and tasks that currently don't fit the scope of the active workgroups. For example, uh, experimentation and rewarding community content that shines through. Uh, we're working on setting up a process for people having a vote within the Marketing Guild. Then Kanichi updated us on the Writing Workgroup and Rojo updated us on the Video Workgroup. And we meet Fridays at 13 UTC. And yeah, come join us for a live meeting or open discussion in the Marketing Guild text channel on the Singularity Net Discord. And I'm not sure. Yeah, Kanichi's here. And Rojo, if you guys want to update us on the Writing and, uh, Video Guild.
Um, I can start. Uh, well, this is Rojo. So, uh, for the Video Workgroup, uh, we are currently still, uh, open, um, for applications. So, uh, uh, we have a couple of applications already submitted. And if you're wondering where you can submit it, well, that would be on DWork. So if you go to DWork, you will find marketing videos. Go there, you will find a task for submitting your portfolio. And then you just submit a link basically as a comment, and then I will assign you a subtask. Um, after, uh, well, uh, this week, uh, we will decide on a com- uh, on a committee to start reviewing these portfolios. I don't want to do the review on myself. That would be a little bit, uh, I don't know. I feel like it would be a little bit unethical. So, uh, we'll have a couple of people, ambassadors probably would be involved in this. And, uh, yes, basically people who have, uh, work that is good enough and, uh, will be, uh, basically the backbone of the workgroup and the, to bootstrap the efforts basically. Yeah, that's about it for me.
Thanks a lot for that. Um, Roger, would you, um, could you perhaps share a little bit about the Video Workgroup?
Uh, about the nature of the workgroup?
Anything you wish to share?
Yeah, uh, of course. So, so.
Maybe Kanichi, oh, sorry.
Yeah, ju- uh, okay. Well, uh, the Video Workgroup is basically as the name might suggest. Well, it's a, it's a workgroup that kind of deals with videos. Uh, videos that are related to the Ambassador Program, Singularity Net, and all its subsidiaries. Well, our purpose is basically create good video content, whether it's short format or, uh, long format for YouTube and all these things. Uh, basically, uh, our members are, uh, two types. So we have interns, which are people who just joined in. Uh, once you, uh, finish your first task and you get rewarded for it, you move from a, an intern to a member, to an official member. And then you have the right to vote for, uh, for projects. So every project is voted by members to be rewarded or not. And yeah, that's about it. If you're interested in video and all things that are related to video, join us and, uh, share with us your portfolio and let's work together basically.
I'm trying, guys, hear me?
Yes.
Yep.
We're here.
Yeah, DM, DM, guys. Um, sorry, um, I've been meaning to actually give, uh, an update on the, um, agenda we focused on last week, Saturday. Yeah, for the Writers' Workgroup, but, um, I was feeling a bit under the weather, so I'm just feeling better. And, um, so I could just give you a quick overview of what we covered. Um, uh, so people had their, um, underword, um, summary and already. And, um, sorry, guys, still just, you know, just getting better. Also, I'll just be accessing that, uh, today. Um, and, um, we discussed, um, a particular document. I, hold on, uh, let me get the link to the document. Uh, for the Writers' Workgroup, uh, it was suggested that we should, um, bring this up actually, bring up the document and probably discuss it further on the Strategy Guild meeting for, uh, the Shu. Yeah, I just sent it to the chat group. It's an idea for, uh, governing the Writers' Workgroup with, um, um, which actually shares more light on the membership roles and, uh, how they actually work essentially. Um, basically, we start with a pupil that is someone that just joins, um, the Writers' Workgroup and is, uh, interested in participating, but not yet, um, doesn't have the ability to do so yet. Then the person has to take two tests. Uh, I mean, hold on, I'll get the link for the test. Um, okay. Yeah. And, um, upon taking the test and passing the test, the person would, uh, become a scribbler. And, uh, the scribbler comes with benefits. Uh, I was going to suggest the idea of using, um, Discord tags to, um, show this and reflect each person's, um, role so far in the Writers' Workgroup. Uh, and then this person can, um, start taking up tasks and end words and upon completion of, you can, there's no limit on it. I think maybe five tasks or maybe even 10 tasks. The person can become a script, a scribe, which has all the, um, benefits of everything, uh, shows, um, to show appreciation for being dedicated to a project and writing and completing tasks successfully and all. So, um, this is the. Okay, um, right, this side. Um, can you hear me?
You're breaking up, dude.
Yeah, it was a little cutting out.
Okay, now.
Yeah, a bit bad.
Alright, cool. So I was saying that, um, the, I'll say that the, uh, test was going to be, uh, yeah, there are two tests. The copy, editing test and content writing test. I'll be sharing the link for copy. Okay, alright, uh, noted, uh, define. Problem. Uh, there are actually two documents. Yes, no, or one? Second, second one. And, uh, so basically this is all we discussed and, um, we're still thinking that if, um, is everything is actually open to editing or, um, inputs from everyone. So this is the second document. And, um, yeah, the idea was to like, uh, uh, I did have a submission from this actually. I'll be checking that out after. And, uh, once the person is done with the test and everything, or sorry, I'm gonna call it that. Uh, they can, um, yes, submit this for review and all. Yeah, the document essentially was our main focus, uh, which shifts towards the, if you scroll down, you see the section with the roles. Uh, upon becoming a scribe, um, such person can opt in to join any one of these roles. Like, uh, make the guide editor circle, um, assistant lead or, they can join all. And the document, um, has a few other things under it. Uh, we're still going to, like, uh, probably bring it up on the Strategy Guild meeting. I don't know if this is the right place to be discussing.
Um, yeah, I think either incubation could make sense or simply on the Writers', um, on the, on the Writers' Meeting. Okay, as Headof comments, uh, sent, uh, to discuss in Process Guild. So we might come back to that, uh, after the Downhold then.
Okay, no problem. So that was our main focus, um, on call and we, um, decided that we will be shifting the call to Friday from, correct, okay. 18, and yeah, I think 18 UTC, I'm not sure. Uh, yeah, we discussed that we'll be, uh, bringing it to the, uh, to Fri- to Friday, right after our Marketing Call.
Okay. Uh, that, that would, then put it at 14 UTC, not 18, I think, but, um, okay. Um, let's, if, if that is certain, that time slot, let's also get it into the shared calendar. So everybody who's subscribed to that can, yeah, just see it pop up. Awesome. Uh, there's a question in chat, um, on how to join the Writers' Workgroup. And I imagine the first step would be to check out the Writers' Workgroup channel. Um, which if you go there now has a bunch of, um, a whole bunch of content being shared. Um, I think joining the, the call on Friday would be a very good first step. Uh, correct me if I'm wrong, Kanichi.
No, definitely, definitely. You can join our call on, um, Friday. I'll be posting the, uh, time slot for, in the Writers' Workgroup. I'll send the link there. Uh, you can ping me in the Writers' Workgroup anytime if you have any questions or something.
Nice one, Kanichi.
Cool. Um, anything else on the Marketing Workgroup side of things? Anybody?
No, I guess just, uh, to an ex- extend an invite also to, uh, Greatness1, uh, about the Marketing Meeting an hour before the Writers' Workgroup. That might be quite a nice lead in, uh, to set up some contacts to get involved. Nice.
Good stuff. Um, okay, that brings us to the next one on the list, being the Strategy Guild and the Incubation Workshop, which are somewhat overlapping, somewhat combined into a two-hour session. Um, super interesting sessions, I have to add. Um, let's see. Now should I give the word to Crandano, Hadolf, or Flyofools? Any takers?
Uh, I, I will, uh, take the distribution, I guess. Uh, Crandano has some beautiful slides, which would be great to share with you guys, the community, to just walk you a bit through the process. Uh, incubation, which is the first half of this two-hour session, and, uh, strategy comes after that. And, uh, I have okayed it with Crandano already, uh, to present, so I'll let him take it away. So smooth.
Can you guys see my slides?
They're still loading for me. Let me, uh, stop sharing for a second.
That's still loading.
Oh yeah, it is still loading. Let's see. Maybe I can try again.
Kanichi, do you need a stuff place?
Are the slides working now?
Yeah.
I see a slide that says Incubation Workgroup, March 15th.
Okay, cool. So yeah, I can just catch you guys up on what we've been talking about in incubation. Uh, the main idea is that, uh, we need a solidified group of ambassadors to work on the structure and build out the program. During this process and moving forward, there's an incubator group of interested individuals that can join meetings and workgroups, which are led by the ambassadors. Immunity members interested in the incubator group must make it past the great filter to enter. And ambassadors can then vote people from the incubator group into the ambassador program as people prove themselves to be able to add quality contribution. Um, so basically why the great filter? It could be something like any interested community members in the ambassador program. Uh, perhaps we could set up a quiz or some sort of standard to get people from the community into this incubation group, which would basically be a chat where people can communicate, people can join the workgroups, and ambassadors can help you get more acclimated to the program. Um, an ambassador in my view, um, I like to imagine the Singularity Net Ambassador Program as a group of individuals that I would be proud to stand with and have a discussion with as a panel in front of the greater cryptocurrency and tech communities. Um, an ambassador of the Singularity Net Program is a person easily viewed by the community via publicly available list online, roles on Discord and socials, that represents the Singularity Net ecosystem and obviously trustworthy individual to discuss the ecosystem with. Um, ambassadors grow awareness on the importance of decentralized AI and AGI. And then what is an incubator group? Uh, the incubator group are for those interested in becoming an ambassador and of a proving ground for people to show their interest, join meetings, and start working on projects. Um, as I mentioned, they'd have their own channel and then there'd be some form of, uh, filter to get into it. So overall, a pool of individuals from the Singularity Net community showing high interest in the ambassador program that could eventually be voted in and become official ambassadors. And strategy, we've been talking about roles and I think that will align really good to this incubation program. We lightly talked about Discord structure and had a really nice open discussion. So that was the first meeting and the second meeting. I'll see if there's anything worth chatting about right now. Uh, let's see. So we did talk about if there should be tasks for people outside of the ambassador program. And that seems like a really solid idea, uh, we can stir up interest in the program, the ecosystem, and then also award the community. Um, let's see. Uh, we talked about establishing the first round of ambassadors and we did establish seven first ambassadors. Um, we talked about meeting times and talking about the rule and allocation amounts. Um, TiVo and Process Guild did talk about onboarding, which is probably really hard to see from my slides, but we kind of laid out a nice flowchart for onboarding. Um, so this is something that we'll start working on at Wednesday's meeting for incubation, which will start at 19 UTC. We talked about doing interview meetings and had a nice discussion over these slides as well. So if anybody's interested in incubation, it's been really interesting conversation. We've gotten really good feedback and, yeah, come join us, 19 UTC on Wednesday.
Yay. Awesome. Thanks a lot for that. Um, yeah, I guess the other part of, uh, of the Wednesday combined session, uh, would be the Strategy Guild. Um, Hadolf, if I may, would you share a little bit about last week? Or perhaps the broader outline?
Absolutely. Love to. Uh, Fly, uh, covered in his slides some of the, uh, items that we covered in the Strategy Guild, which occurs after incubation, kind of intertwines, but takes more of a high-level view. So we've been, uh, discussing and covering, uh, roles and, uh, compensation. And, uh, as, as Fly said, incubation. And, uh, I think where we left it off at last week's, um, Strategy Guild, a 10,000-foot view, was requirements for ambassadors. Um, he touched on it, Fly touched on it a little bit, but we're going to, uh, this week start looking at, uh, code of conduct, uh, what the mission statement is. Uh, we did discuss a little bit of a, uh, Git book, uh, build-out or lessons to onboard because onboarding is a big portion of the entire ambassador program. And as we have and we see in today's meeting and some of the communications in the different channels, we have more and more interest, um, growing for people wanting to come in. So we need to be able to get ahead of it and be able to onboard them. And as Kanichi and, um, the, uh, Marketing Workgroup and the Writing Workgroup and the Video Workgroup all start putting out stuff, we're going to have even more people, um, hit the, the chain. So we need to be ready for it and get ahead of it. Uh, we discussed some of the DWork templates, uh, or creating a DWork template and to assign tasks manually. And, uh, we're going to continue on that. And, uh, we'll probably this week bring up again, um, to settle it, I think, unless we do it today, uh, the, the, the $10 converted to AgeX at the time, uh, wage, which is what we've agreed on, uh, the compensation, and it should be reviewed on a regular basis. So I'm not as high-tech as Fly. Those were beautiful slides. I love them. Um, one thing I, I do want to say is Kanichi, um, in last Saturday's meeting, put together a document that has the bones, uh, and the outline structure of being a very good document for the different workgroups, so we don't all have to reinvent the wheel. There are some issues with it, um, and it needs some editing, in my humble opinion. And that's why I suggested, uh, for TiVo, if we can work it into, um, Process Guild and, and the whiteboard, it can get documented, we can tear it apart and, and get something set up for each workgroup, so we only have the one document. Um, so that'll be Wednesday. Or if TiVo's here and we get into it, we may look at that document today. And that's about all I have to say. Any questions?
I think last week, didn't we also vote in some ambassadors?
I, I did miss, uh, mentioning that. We did have our first class of ambassadors. Um, and, uh, Peter, uh, um, well, I'll let Peter announce who all of the ambassadors are. I think that's his, um, role since he is really, in my opinion, the head ambassador. He is, he's it. Um, but we did vote in the first class of ambassadors, um, and the roles have been assigned in the Discord. And now we have to solidify in the Strategy Guild and Incubation exactly, um, how we're going to handle the classes. So Peter, why don't you publicly announce who the ambassadors are?
Sure thing. I can do it. Uh, for those keeping an eye on the, on the Discord channels, it's, uh, might not be too much of a surprise. Um, but yeah, during the, the Strategy Session, we decided that, uh, the first group would be seven ambassadors. And those would be in, uh, random order, basically, um, would be Flyofools, Crandano, Hadolf, Roger Kaboti, TiVo, Felix, and myself. And yeah, the intention with, um, establishing this is that, uh, now there's some actual clarity on, or well, this is the first step in, in getting actual clarity in, like, assigning roles in Discord, like, this is an ambassador. And also for, um, um, for voting, uh, new, uh, members to, to get the ambassador role, uh, this, this group will also play that role. And, uh, not all of it is set in stone yet, so I imagine that's also something for the coming weeks. But yeah, very happy to, uh, to have this group of, uh, yeah, the initial cohort of seven.
Yay, guys. It's a pleasure to. Yeah, it's a pleasure.
Um, alright. What you did bring up, um, Hadolf, um, the discussion about. Um, alright, uh, what you did bring up, um, Headelf, um, the discussion about the uh, using a standard compensation. And this was um, it's, it's a recurring theme, um. Basically about half a year ago, I would say, uh, we established the baseline of rewards, um, which we could use uh, for tasks, um, that, that had a reward, but then we did not by definition give every task a reward, just as a side note. Um, that was set at uh, ten dollars uh, an hour. And with the um, yeah, the knowledge that every now and then we need to um, check in on that, um. As you're all well aware, um, the budget of the ambassador program is based in AGIX tokens and that has seen quite some increase in price, basically, um, also increasing our budget and I think that's, well, it's not all that's related to it. Um, basically, we, we want to reward people fairly for their efforts. And also considering we do have a global audience, so. Yeah, it's, it's um, I, I'm not sure, I would, I wouldn't mind talking about it right now or discussing it and, and getting um, a lot of input. At the same time, I'm not sure if what would be a, yeah, a good structure for, for actually settling the debate, uh, instead of people sharing their opinion and then being like, yeah, now what? Um, so perhaps if anybody has some suggestions on that side of things, uh, that would be very welcome.
Uh, I would suggest opening the debate and then having a quick vote. Most people around here are already engaged members of the community, so I think making a vote here would make sense as well.
Yeah, I, I think that leaving it open for at least twenty-four hours for the global audience should be done, but I think it can be definitely started a vote here. I think this thing about a quick vote, that is the question, I guess. Coming to consensus.
Just to add a little bit to that, we, we did have in um, I think pretty early in the Treasury um, Guild, in the, the process of, of building out the Treasury Guild, we established that these type of um, bigger decisions, they would need a, a week of um, this makes me even doubt if we agreed on a two-week period, um. I have to come back to that to be exactly sure, to be honest. Um, but yeah, do allow for at least a week of uh, potential big additions to the discussion, let's say.
Yeah, yeah. And I think that it can be um, perhaps people have a lot to say on this matter and, and perhaps it could be uh, um, that we don't get around everyone in a discussion, so by enabling this kind of what, what was being used on sway, where people could leave comments, I, uh, I think is, is a really good thing, especially if it's over this kind of week or two weeks. Um, yeah, then it doesn't come down to being heard in a conversation, say.
Uh, we, we could open a forum about this, actually.
I mean, on forum thing, we have DAO lens, which uh, a few people here have been dipping into. Um, it could be a good opportunity to use that for this, for this vote, to trial that.
I mean, my suggestion on this, and with everyone understanding that this is something that's going to be revisited.
With DAO lens, but I will check it out and uh, I guess uh, next hour, we might talk about this.
With the understanding it's going to be revisited is, we vote on it today, see if we can get Felix and Tivo even by proxy to cast a vote. Have the seven ambassadors decide on it, but even if it's ten dollars an hour right now, it gets settled right now. And then opening up a forum to continually discuss it over, you know, the next quarter or whatever, the next week, months, I, I think would be a good way to go.
Yeah, I kinda, I kinda second that and um, the, the reasoning for it. And, and I'm like everybody else, I want everybody to get paid as much as they can, as much as we can afford, but also what's realistic. Um, but we're still in the Strategy Guild and, and the incubation, we are still haven't really settled the budget uh, per working group and per role. And I think until that budget percentage is settled, you can't really, and how many people are going to be in the roles? And remembering that multiple roles, uh, people are eligible to have multiple roles, but I think we need to uh, a, as Crandano and, and I and Fly started, pulling everything back and getting it settled before we go forward, so we don't constantly rehash the same uh, stuff over. I just went back through my notes and the, the ten dollars has been brought up in uh, three different meetings that we've had, uh, that I hadn't. I'm sorry.
Hi, it's Stephen here, the, I, I was just um, I mean, I've worked in the past with Felix and Tivo on similar issues and one of the things we did do was um, to create some context is have a discussion document. I mean, this is an interesting issue, as Peter raised, the issue of how do you remunerate globally? You know, because of differences in uh, income and you know, differences and uh, how people are remunerated locally. So what would be helpful would be uh, a source, some point, one point to go with, as you said, where there's uh, the document, the discussion is framed in terms of documentation, this could be like a word, a Google document or something. So, and that could then form part of a corpus for policy. Um, so, I mean, it's just an idea, it doesn't have to be on Google Docs, it could be on some other platform, but it's about what you're referring to, about what things that get lost, you know, contexts that get lost. So capturing those concerns and then documenting them from the beginning in terms of, you know, so then people add comments to the document. Um, would that be a good way to proceed?
Yes, that's like a good option to me, with Crandano.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it sounds good to have like, kind of a good source for people to go into and kind of see the pitch and what people are thinking. Maybe we can also continue the conversation in uh, whether it's the Strategy Chat or somewhere where we can all post. Leading up to uh, tomorrow's meeting and next week's Strategy Meeting. Um, I do agree, like what Headelf was saying, as we're still working on the budgets or the various rules within the program. Um, it can be kind of hard to think about without knowing the allocations and certain things. Um, and then maybe we take some time where people can throw in their thoughts while keeping the total monthly allocation budget in mind and uh, yearly budget of the ambassador program in mind. Uh, what people think like the pros and cons of ten dollars an hour are. Um, if people think it should be raised, um, keeping this budget in mind. Um, because I think we'll know more on, on Wednesday and yeah.
Which I see is kind of uh, a bit, a bit closer to the ground than this ten thousand foot view. And this is in one way how I see the kind of incubation and the uh, strategy, the ten thousand foot perspectives to really help each other in developing as we kind of um, with, with many of these questions, we need to kind of answer them together and they, they kind of require different, different perspectives, some more higher up and some more lower to the ground. I think that we can, we can really make some headway on this question uh, this week.
My thoughts on this is uh, ten dollars is a, is a good start. Because I, I mean, I, I would love to get paid thirty, forty dollars uh, an hour for sitting in this meeting, but i- it's unrealistic, especially with what I hope the rate of growth for this program is. Because if we start out at ten dollars an hour, or whatever it is, I think it should be ten, we can always raise it. But if we set it at, let's say thirty, and then we just get so many people coming in and the budget takes a hit, it's hard to reset that rate to fifteen dollars an hour, because then people are going to get upset. Uh, they're going to feel like, oh, they're taking money now, where if we look at things and, and we look at the growth, we can raise it incrementally as necessary, but we're not going to be upsetting people along the way. If people think it's too low now, well, there's room for growth. Versus we run into a budgetary issue in two months' time and we have to reduce payments, you're going to have some negative feelings.
I, I agree that it's a kind of good point to avoid these negative feelings, but I think that um, in like, for instance, um, on token price, uh, if we're, if we're going to compare like rewards, US dollars per hour to AgeX, like say uh, six months ago, um, rewards are very different in that aspect, so there already has been quite a lot of change um, in this, in this regard. Uh, where kind of say ten dollars an hour six months ago was um, there was more, let's say, potential for uh, upward mobility. Um, but obviously that, at this point, not so much, right? Um, so I think that's, that's also something to be taken into consideration, but yes.
Yeah, Fly, I, I agree a hundred percent. I, I think, and I think we've discussed this in Strategy, is someone that's doing creative work or editing work or, or whatever it is, or someone that's an outward ambassador, um, you know, going to shows and meeting and greeting people and talking or doing, you know, podcasts, could probably get compensated at a higher rate. Uh, then, and I'll say, I'll use translation, because translation, we've pretty much set that role and that working group. So I'll say that that will get compensated at a higher rate, but until we have the budgets set and the percentages, we can't really uh, do that upward mobility yet. And that, that's, that's a good discussion to bring up in a week or two after we get uh, the budget set percentage-wise that we started on last week. The other thing I'll mention with documentation, um, currently we have little documentation going on here, because it's hard to record uh, Discord. Uh, but Peter and Ian have been working on um, um, what is it, Zoom? And being able to record Zoom. And you know, I'm old fashioned, I like seeing people, I like seeing their body language, their faces as we discuss and Zoom will uh, give us a little more bandwidth and we'll start getting to know each other a little bit. And we can record it and we can document it, we can put it out on YouTube. And that in itself will lend to, I think what the, one of the number one principles of the ambassador program is, is transparency. And not only will it lend the whole air of transparency to us, uh, and give us that transparent role, but it will also start acting as a marketing role, because people will start seeing all these Snet ambassador workgroups and the town hall now, the Strategy Guild, they'll see that and say, hey, those are nice people, they're not fighting with you, with each other. They're, they're working towards consensus, I want to be a part of that group. And, and that's going to help with the documentation and um, Stephen's suggestion on starting a uh, Googled documentation for documenting, I, I, I think is great. And that's along the lines with Mikasa and uh, I mean, Kenichi and um, Fly and stuff has started with their documents. I, I think it's a great, great, great suggestion.
Yeah, Tom, I mean, you main, I mean, Q8 DAO, which is a part of, we documented the first few rounds of Catalyst Circle in quite a lot of detail and there were Zoom calls and then we transcribed the Zoom calls, then we summarized them. Um, and there's a couple of things that are going on there, there's the accessibility in terms of you just want to watch a conversation, that's one level. And then there's the decisions being made in that meeting, like how do you capture them? You know, and how do you communicate them offline away from the meeting, you know? And then there's the other thing which we've discovered over the years is the intellectual property of Singularity Net or the community ambassadors. It's that your, there's an opportunity here also uh, to build up, to capture your knowledge, you know, and to say, and it could be a really positive thing, you can say, look, you know, this is the lessons we've learned. And, and, and the other thing that we've learned as well is to have some form of versioning. So to say, look, this is where we started, this is what changed, you know, this is where we're evolving to. And that also helps with transparency and accountability. Now, I, I know I'm raising a lot of issues there, that's a big, sounds like a, but you know, that can start with a simple Google document. I can, you know, a, a place where all the Google documents are held and then in time, we can then merge that into a place where that is presented asynchronously, and as well as having your Zoom meetings recorded, say on a YouTube channel or something.
I just want to jump back to something I heard, I think it was Fly mentioned, uh, versus the, the cost difference between AgeX token six months ago to the price of it now. And I think what I heard was there's less room for growth. Now, I, I have a fundamental disagreement with that and I think this needs to be taken into consideration with what we're being paid, any AgeX I'm getting now, I'm not selling it. Because I'm here because I believe in the potential of AgeX and AgeX tokens monetary growth. And if we do our jobs correctly to the best of our ability in such a way, that token price should increase, because it's getting into more people's hands. It's being understood by more people a- and the token price should go up over the next couple of years. So what is ten dollars an hour now could very well be fifty, i- if you hold on to your tokens for a year.
I totally, I totally agree with you uh, on some level, um, I guess I was just being poetic, uh. Let, let me rephrase what I was, what I was scurrying around. The price is like ten X more than it was about six months ago, something, something like that, I'm not really, I don't look at prices, but that, that's, that's basically it, right? The a ten X difference in the amount of AgeX, that's what I was trying to lead to. And I guess what you raise is a very good point and I like fundamentally agree with you on, in terms of believing more in the system of uh, cryptocurrency than the US dollar. And it's something uh, for me, very close to my heart and like ideological, which is in some way why partly I find it so weird that uh, when we, when we denominate uh, rewards, we denominating US dollars. Like surely, I mean, it's something that's come up in a conversation between Crandano and I of, like surely if we believe in the system of cryptocurrency, then we should be denominating that, in that and not US dollars. As we believe this will be the system of the world uh, in, in the future and kind of going like kind of trying to implement, I guess it's so hard, because as a web three community, we have these different ideologies and now we have, now we are enabled, we have the capacity to actually put them into the world. And now it's like linking this, this ideology, which like brings us all here, with like how we actually do this on the ground. But yeah, man, really nice thoughts.
Pete, Peter, on that topic of um, pure capitalism here, can, can we get paid in a basket of Rejuve, Nuneet and AgeX at this point? Like, I believe in all the projects, I, I, I think they're all going to go up. So uh, I'm like, I'm like the Friday DeFi, I'm not selling my tokens.
Um, no, I got where you're, where you're coming from, um, well, basically it's um, I mean, our, our current funding is in AGIX, so. Yeah, for the program to pay out in other currencies, we need to swap it out, which is doable. Um, alternatively, um, that's uh, in the pipeline still. Uh, for example, um, once Nuneet's um, uh, public alpha is out, they're also looking for uh, having the app translated and these would be perfectly suited for the ambassador program. And then rewards uh, would be in Nuneet tokens. So once the spinoffs start requesting tasks by the ambassador program, that would bring those tokens directly to us. Um, yeah, I think we, we, I mean, we can swap into other tokens and use these, um, but that's, yeah, I'm not too strongly, I don't have a too strong opinion on that. But what was mentioned earlier does bring the question, like um, when, when deciding and talking about these budgets, should we consider um, compensating people for work, assuming they are, you know, um, not doing? you know, not doing their, another job at that moment to provide for them for, you know, groceries, rent, that kind of stuff? Of course, there's a long-term vision if you believe in that.
Yeah.
Current token prices, you know, it is what it is. I can't, technically, I cannot talk too much about it, actually, since I work for the foundation. Anyway, yeah, you catch my drift, I guess. Like, should we take this into consideration? It's a question that, I don't know, we've had people helping us, which simply, instead of, they were doing it instead of other paid work. And then they're automatically comparing it directly with their wage at that point, right? It's just, yeah. I don't know if we, I kind of like, like, in a best-case scenario, we would have only people helping us and not for the money or the rewards, but because they care, they want the reputation, you know? That's like a best-case scenario. However, yeah, not everybody can just.
Yeah, I think a great deal of care needs to be had here from experiencing other projects. It's that you shouldn't assume that people do not need income. You know, not everyone can be a volunteer. And it doesn't mean that one person is less valuable than others. Just because someone can work for free, you know, that doesn't make them better than someone who needs to be paid. Okay? And that has happened in past where there's been like a kind of prestige associated with it. But that can push out people who need the income, you know? And so I'll just suggest some consideration, some pause here just to take account of that. So that people, yes, some people will need to be paid because they need to put food on the table or something like that.
I'm going to go even one step further. I don't, does anyone here not need income? I need income. I mean, there might be other sources of it, but everyone at a cellular level needs income to provide for themselves. And, and I mean, this might just be, you know, I come from a more corporate background. But what level of involvement do you need from certain people? I mean, for the whole structure of the guild, I really wouldn't be opposed to having some full-time workers at some point. And I know we're not there yet, but at that point, then you have people working dedicated and specifically on this. And I think it's clear who cares about this stuff, who puts thought into it, who could possibly be elevated into that role. But it comes down to what impact do you want this guild to have? And what you're willing to invest in people to achieve that goal?
Peter, could I ask something or say something about in terms of getting rewards in other ecosystem tokens as well? How I've understood it? And please correct me if this is not entirely correct. But the HIX token set aside for the Ambassador Programs came out of the Phase 2 proposal. And as the other ecosystems are launching their own tokens, they have their own individual token, their own percentage of tokens set aside for community. But would that then be something that would be similar across the board as sort of header back to Singularity Net Foundation? Or would that be independently set by the project themselves? And to, would that be something to start thinking about already now to, yeah, getting in contact with the different spinoffs for potential rewards?
Definitely. To start with the latter, yes. I am, I am trying. It's not a direct spinoff, but collaboration with deep funding was received very well and also on deep funding side and also on our side. But that so far has been the only, yeah, the only really concrete, somebody contributing with funding for tasks. But yes, I'm trying to get Nunet as DAO, Rejuve. Yeah, that's where we're at right now, token-wise at least, spinoff-wise, which actually have spinoff. And to answer the first part, well, for a bit of context, it's not directly allocated in Phase 2 allocations to have a percentage for the Ambassador Program. There is an allocation for the Supervisory Council. And in their great wisdom, they have decided to push one-third of their allocation. Their total allocation is one and a half percent. They pushed half a percent to us, so a third of their total. Yeah, so the other spinoffs, they don't have, they do have allocations for marketing or community incentives, but not directly tied to feeding that by necessity into the Ambassador Program. But there's definitely room for that. And the more we're showcasing our benefit to Singularity Net, then, yeah, hopefully, the more eager they will be to also join in on the fun. I hope that somewhat answers, but feel free to ask. Yeah, great. Thanks. That was clarifying.
Is there anything that is, that you see these other projects in the ecosystem needing in terms of validation from the Ambassador Program? That would make them kind of switch into, ah, yes, we can delegate some tokens or tasks to this guild or the Ambassador Program, for instance?
No, that's, no, it's not like they're concretely waiting, like, ah, first see how they deal with Topic X before we engage. It's not like that. Yeah, I'm not really sure. They are aware of that, I am sure. Yeah, like I said, for example, Nunet seems the first thing they will dip into trying to is translating the app into a couple of languages. And I do know from Rejuve, I mean, I told before, I think I've known Jasmine for a long time since, years from the community side. And we both started as community manager around the same month, actually, for Singularity Net. So I'm super convinced she is. I mean, she's been silly busy the past weeks. And I'm confident that will, I think actually Rejuve might be the lowest barrier to actually getting started.
Nice. Perhaps that's something that the workgroups can take forward. For instance, to make a proposal of their own volition.
Peter, I had a small question, a little bit outside the subject. But I was wondering if Singularity Net or some of its subsidiaries will be participating in the blockchain economy, what would you call it, event? Yeah.
Is that a specific event?
So there is like an event called the Blockchain Economy, and it's going to be in Turkey in May. It's a big event. I don't know if they're going to be there. If they're going to be there, I would gladly participate with them if they have a stand or something like that.
Honestly, I'm not sure. Would need to check. We are on some events, but it's a small selection, I would say. There's also tons of events.
Yeah, I think they do.
Go ahead.
I was just going to say, I think they do from like city to city every few months, no? Roger.
Yep, yep. They do visit multiple cities, yeah. I was just wondering because, you know, Turkey is quite a hub as well. I know that last time they were in Dubai, if I'm not mistaken. So, yeah, I mean, we don't have many, let's say, countries that are pro crypto. And Turkey is definitely a very pro crypto country. I mean, literally, we have old people in here buying Bitcoin and all kinds of cryptocurrencies. It's quite crazy, actually, mainly because of inflation. But yeah, the people around here and the government as well, the laws are very friendly to crypto, to be honest. Yeah, they have a lot of interesting events. I was wondering if they're going to visit. Anyway, I'm going anyway, so it doesn't matter. I'm going with a friend. Hopefully, if we can get some T-shirts for the ambassadors, I can go there with the official T-shirt, you know, and all these things. And yeah, I'll be talking to people, you know, spreading the word around. Yeah.
I think this is definitely something that can be like a work towards as a, as a work group. I think it's previously been ideated about a few times of having this kind of outreach and scout program to go to in real-life events. So dude, it's a great, great opportunity to pull some people together for it.
Absolutely. Yeah, I mean, I'm sure for quite some people, Kamara's proposal now comes to mind. Looking back, it's only, I think, only a month ago, but it was just a bit too early. So it kind of showed like we needed quite a bit more structure in place before a proposal like that to fit somehow. Yeah, not too much, but it feels like that to me.
And I think like what Headelf is saying before and Crandano about like this, taking a step back for now and waiting for these allocations to be sorted out will really help move the conversation on with these smaller workgroups.
Yes, the phrase puts in chat, the marketing group would be a good spot to discuss these type of events and also arranging T-shirts and stuff. Yeah, and as Headelf points out, there's tons of events. I think if you want, you can just full-time tour, tour around from event to event and not have any downtime.
Literally.
And also, as Headelf pointed out a bit before, we are running the lot of slot a little bit. And Tivo is in the house and the Process Guild is about to get started. So I think wrapping is kind of a nice idea. Let me quickly check the slides to see if there's any significant on there. Well, I do want to call out on deep funding, round two has, the vote has concluded and also the vote on the loyalty rewards allocations. And the results will take a couple of days for analysis before they get shared. And I think for the loyalty reward allocation, I want to have another community call. We had four of these before the voting. And I want to, yeah, have another session where we kind of take the results and, yeah, interpret them, figure out how to implement the results. I was kind of considering to do that during a portion of the Town Hall, but at the same time, there's always plenty of topics and we always go over time. So maybe a separate session is better for that. I think I will go for a separate session there.
Nice session, guys.
Yeah, good stuff. Quick check, anybody has something really urgent to?
Shout out to DAOlands. They participated in DAO Day, which was a conference in Estonia. So a lot of people joined there and then like a nice amount. But most of them had no clue what is blockchain or DAOs and how to participate. So we'll see how many captured the intention. They did join because they had some like assumptions, what it could be and what it can be. So it's great that they took the first step to join in and listen what's happening.
Hmm, cool.
First time, like a fish in the, like a big fish in the sea. Because all the questions what was asked, I knew the answers. When you were, the topics are going when something was asked, that's what like very odd feeling. Totally different from years ago. This Zoom calling every day has been training quite a lot, I would say.
Awesome. Okay, anybody else? A quick one?
Yeah, I was just going to say, anybody giving feedback, it's been super helpful. For instance, like the Phrase Defy, the last couple of weeks, you've been giving great feedback. And Stephen today and others. And it really creates like a really strong soundboard for getting these ideas through. And that's super important. So I hope you guys stick around.
Yeah, fully agree. Yeah, I'm here. Thanks for the compliment. I really do appreciate that. I'm just trying to add value where I can. I mean, this is a good group. I think that's pretty clear and people definitely care about where this group is going. You know, and I'm more than willing to invest my time in people of stature like yourselves.
Yeah, I would echo that as well as where we have time to contribute where we can.
Lovely. I think we'll take that warm feeling on the inside as a closing sign for today. Thanks all for attending. And as per usual, after Town Hall, the Process Guild meeting is taking place on, quick check, yes, on Zoom. The link is shared in the Process Guild channel and sometimes also pops up in the chat. I'll do that right after. So thanks a lot, everybody, and hope to see you in further meetings, be it right after this one, be it tomorrow, be it further down the week. And have a nice evening. Thanks.